I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business.
I put allegiance to freedom of life in the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, ready?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, we're gonna get you out here, you know.
Okay, all right. Well, where this year go? I'll be in a little better position than anywhere. Slowing down. Should have one for every board member and Brandy. Oh, we need one more. Can't count. Well, the first thing I want to address is the workers' compensation renewal, which comes due with Indiana Public Employers Plan at IPAP on January 1st. So I've laid out for you the estimated payroll. We use 2020 audited payroll plus we added 5% for a total payroll of $1,108,510 as our estimate for 2022. Our experience mod factor, which is based on three-year prior claims, so 2018, 2019, and 2020 claims, didn't change a whole lot. Went from, it's now 1.68 and that should say the 2021 factor is 1.67. My typo. So you can see the paid claims that we've had and the 2021 claims as of November 30th. So next year, when we talk, we'll lose the 2018 paid claims. We'll pick up the 2020 paid claims, which are, we can expect that experience mod to go up even further in 2023. There at the bottom, I listed the 2020 premium, which was audited based on actual payroll. It was $28,159. The 2021 estimated premium, $36,197. And our projection for next year is $42,044, which is an increase of $5,847. So given the claims experience we've had, I'm pleased with what we have to offer. Well, these others that are open, so if they're not paid, will they go with us this year because that's when they occur? Yes. Yes. In addition, and I just thought of it when I was sitting here waiting, IPAP did award the town a safety grant. I think that's been reported at a prior meeting.
We thought we'd talk about, you know, when and if that presentation with the buyer department would be...
Right. I think Manny and Jim Veach worked on putting that together. So I appreciate their efforts there that the town was awarded a safety grant. So... Any questions on the workers' compensation? We need to have another year like 2020 where we had zero. So maybe 2022 will get lucky and have that zero.
Let's hope.
Let's hope. Also, here tonight, three years ago, Branson Insurance had lost the package policy for the town to Astra. And I have been working with Brandy, who I want to thank her and her staff. Jeff Esslinger, he's tired of seeing my phone number on his caller ID. And so is Randy Neeland. I appreciate all their efforts for us to put together the information so that we could present a quote for the board's consideration. So these are little thicker packets, but... Everybody got one? Oh, I made one for Nick. Sorry.
Is he still here?
Yes. I do have with me tonight, and he's going to address a couple things, Mr. Mike Shaw. He's with Burnham and Flower Insurance, who is our contact. He's our direct link to the underwriter at HCC, who has put together this quote for us. A couple things, and we won't read through all these pages because I know you're going to want to evaluate it and look at it, which might generate some questions. But a few things in talking with Brandy, Jeff, and Randy that we have added to this policy. We did increase all your current building values by 4%, which is pretty standard. We would have done that, too. We added the Jack's location for liability coverage. We added a dwelling on Jefferson Street for liability coverage, which I understand the town owns. In talking with Randy, we increased the K-9, the coverage on the K-9 to $15,000. In talking with Jeff, we were talking about the transformers that are stored on the lot in the yard at the utility plant. And he said we really needed to increase their value to $300,000 for those transformers in storage. I also talked to Jeff because it occurred to me and looking at it over, a few years ago, the board added the Howard Avenue decorative streetlights for coverage. I think there's 72 of them. So we added that. So I said, Jeff, you know, you don't have the ones on Howard Avenue. So Jeff counted 35. So we added $315,525 to your property values because of the Howard Avenue lights. So that's kind of some things that we added to your current insurance coverages. Couple other things. Three years ago, Astra provides silo limits on the excess liability. Those of you who are on the board may or may not remember that conversation, but the $4 million excess applied separately to each coverage line. So you could have a 4 million, you know, the underlying plus 4 million on an auto claim in a year. You could have a general liability claim for the 5 million. You could have a law enforcement claim for 5 million all in one year. Where what we had was 4 million total, no matter where the claims were or what, it was a total. So that was, Astra had those silo limits that applied separately. HCC does that as well. On all coverage lines except the employer's liability, which is connected to the workers' compensation policy. The property deductible, you currently have a $2,500 deductible. This quote is $1,000 deductible on the property. On earthquake, you currently have a full limit on the buildings and contents with a $25,000 deductible. HCC has quoted a 5 million limit on earthquake with a $50,000 deductible. So better one place, you know. Nothing's going to mesh 100%. The flood, Astra has a million limit. We have a 5 million limit, but we have a $50,000 deductible and Astra has $25,000. So as you can see, there's going to be some of those differences. I tap this because that's where the meat of the coverages start. But if you go back about four or five pages, you get to package premium of $54,000, or excuse me, $84,198. And terrorism, which I believe you do not carry now, is an additional $500, which I would definitely recommend for a $500 premium. I'm going to let Mike address. This is high, but there's a couple explanations on why it's high. So he's going to address those issues with you. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions, although I know this is all new to you tonight, so.
Absolutely, thank you. As Carla mentioned...
Oh, thank you.
All good. As Carla mentioned, I'm Mike Shaw with Burnham Flower. What we do is specifically public entities. That's all we do across four states. Michigan, Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, me specifically being Indiana only. So the benefit of us kind of helping Carla is we know public entities very well. In fact, the only thing I really know is insuring public entities. So looking through your current policy, the biggest thing that really stuck out is that the electric utility, the substation, the seven, I think we have it valued at $700,000. That location is currently not covered for equipment breakdown. And what that means is if anything electrical goes wrong, it's on you guys to fix it. The insurance company doesn't care. The reason that's such a big deal is because I've never seen that not covered. So I've never seen a town not covered, excuse me, if they have one. So it really stands out because it's so expensive, because it's so common to have problems with it. Talking to my coworkers who have been doing this for 30 years, they've had a claim, they've seen a $3 million claim, they've seen 1.1 million, I think that Nella for $700,000. Some of them would just be a tree limb come in, knocks a wire down, there's a power surge of some sort, and they have to replace the whole location. Costs $1.1 million to replace, comes over from Germany, takes some time, you know, and that's, right now, that's not covered on your current policy. That's going to be the main reason for the reason our premiums substantially higher. It costs $30,000, $35,000 to get that coverage just because it's so, the claim frequency is a bit higher than maybe say like this building coming down or something. That's more likely to happen there and it always costs a lot more to fix if something like that happens. So that's the number one thing that I can't emphasize enough that very important for you guys to have that looks like, based on reading through the policies myself, it doesn't look like that is currently covered.
Why did we never lost that? You remember how much that was, like 38 to 40? On that substation? I was just thinking, trying to remember what that number was. I'll have to look.
Yeah. That coverage will go for the transformers when they're actually installed. I was saying, right now, we're not worried about electric problems with it if they're not installed. Soon as they get installed, you know, you have a power, a lightning hit somewhere wrong goes through the electricity first. I don't know. You understand it way better than I can, like what can go wrong with electricity? But the coverage for that, too, is what we're talking about. So, and you probably have some installed somewhere right now, but...
And like on that particular coverage, is there a deductible?
So it's going to be a little higher deductible. It's $10,000 deductible on that specifically for those transformers.
So for the station, the switchgear?
Yeah, the switchgear, that specific location. I had it added a certain amount somewhere, but yeah, for that electric stuff, at those electric distribution, anything work that goes with that kind of equipment, it's $10,000 deductible compared to the normal property deductible you guys have. The other big thing that I noticed is you guys don't have any kind of cyber coverage. And your current agent may have talked to you about it before. It's the hottest thing in the insurance world, which I guess if you're not in the insurance world, I find it too exciting. But we see it all the time. It's, claims have been going skyrocketing. Municipality is the one with worst hit. Municipalities, hospitals, and schools are the big three that get hit the most. We don't have a quote for it because I know we weren't able to get an application completed for it. I know Carla talked to you guys about it and I think some nerves out or something. I'm not entirely sure. But that's something I would highly recommend. We can get your quote in two or three days, probably. That's another one. That's a lot of, it's high, it's, if you get hit, you get hit hard. We've seen a $1.1 million claim just paid out a couple weeks ago. There's a county down south that gets $450,000. A town that's smaller than the town of Rockville up north, was $175,000.
When you say claim, were they actually paying out the ransomware?
Yeah. So it's not just the ransom, that's the big part?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be paying out the ransom, but putting the system back together, legal notices that you have to put out. Even just negotiations with the cyber criminals. It's kind of a weird world where these insurers are talking to them basically every day because they insure 15,000 entities across the world. So they get 500 claims a year. So every single day they're talking and they get to know these guys pretty well and can negotiate a little bit better than if you're having to do it on your own. But they help negotiate down the payment because they're the ones not paying at that point, not you. So they negotiate it down, pay the ransom for you, and work to get everything back up and running, rebooted, all that stuff. I think that come with a cyber attack for you guys. Roughly, obviously I don't have a quote for you. We don't have an application yet, but roughly I'd say it's probably $4,000 to $5,000 a year at this point. However, last year was about $2,500 and it's doubled because there's so many claims out there.
Mike, most, they're probably going to require that MFA.
Yes.
Multi...
Multi-factor authentication, yeah. So that's going to be probably the biggest thing. Your premiums are going to be dictated a lot on your current cyber controls. And the number one thing, it's called multi-factor authentication. That might not mean anything to you, but it's, if you're not aware, it's when you type in your password, you text your phone and you have to enter a code off your phone. You guys have probably done that with different websites. That's going to be the multi-factor authentication. So most people aren't aware of the terminology, but know the concept. So I don't know if you guys have that on your systems. If you do, fantastic. If not, recommend, high enough to get that going, too. It's like locks on your doors, basically, if you're trying to prevent a robbery. So last thing, I want to touch on the terrorism that Carla mentioned. Not as, not as important, I would say, as the other two, but still definitely important because it's relatively cheap. And I know we saw something, we saw a claim paid out last year with the rioting that was going on June of 2020 with the police shootings and everything. That was labeled domestic terrorism, which means it's not covered on anything that you have unless you have terrorism coverage. We saw vandalism going on at one of the wastewater treatment plants over kind of closer to Indianapolis. That haven't been covered by that. But usually, it's not too expensive. And I think it's $500, if I remember right, and can cover if something like that were to happen. Hopefully it never does, but hopefully you don't have to use any of your insurance coverage ever because you guys never have a problem. But unfortunately, it's not reality. But that's my spiel. So I don't know if you guys have any questions about what I've covered, what Carla's covered, or anything.
So on that, back to that equipment breakdown, it's added about $30,000 to our quote for the equipment breakdown, including the electric department or substation or whatever you call it, switchgear.
Yeah, if we didn't have that coverage, if we took it off, we'd probably be right around a kind of a little lower than your current policy. But that is the only reason that we're higher, if we're being honest. But we don't feel comfortable insuring the town without that coverage because it's such a big coverage for us.
And you're talking the substation.
Yeah, yep, yeah. And that can be, you know, even if a car runs to it and something comes down and causes electric failure. Tree limb blows in as we, that's the one that we've seen for $1.1 million. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the main thing we're talking about there, yes.
I think we got any questions?
No. Lot of things.
Yeah, absolutely.
And your next meeting is...
Two weeks?
Twenty one, today's the sixth.
Well, if you have any questions in the meantime, as you're going through this, let Randy know and she can call me or feel free to give me a call and we'll answer your questions. And we'll address the work comp then on the 20th as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would say happy holidays, but if I'm coming on the 20th, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah?
You ready?
Yep. Item number one on the agenda here is Title VI policy, acceptance and sign off for INDOT. I sent all this stuff out to you. It's kind of lengthy document, about 38, 40 pages, I think. Also sent it to Nick for review. INDOT reviewed it as well. It's good with INDOT. All we need to do is have Nick put together the legal aspect of it and approve it in a meeting. And then I'll enter that information into the legal document and ship it back to INDOT.
So what does this come from?
This is from, anytime we do federal funding, you've got to have the Title VI policy and the ADA policies in place.
Do we know I had it for Howard?
I don't know what you did and didn't have.
Your point, took care of it, I believe.
Probably. The Title VI, if you remember on the last couple of community crossing strands we had, we had to sign off and we had to put together some documents saying that we had this grievance procedure and blah, 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 blah. That thing was list about five or six things. What INDOT wanted me to do and tasked me with is putting together those documents in their template and a comprehensive policy. And that's basically what I've done, is just followed the template and plugged in the little things that they fast forward.
Is it like something that's renewed annually or is it something that needs to be revisited each project?
I think I'm, put down on the thing that I'm going to take a look at annually for review. But that's just, it's kind of good practice to do that anyway. I don't know that there would be a lot of changes. Now, the ADA policy that I've started working on, they asked that it be reviewed at least every three. And one of the emails I sent you guys today was whether or not the town had ever done a 504, Section 504 self-assessment for Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm sure you guys had to when you did the Howard Avenue project because that was all federal funds. But I don't know how to get my hands on that unless maybe I ask Ken.
I wouldn't just, I mean, see.
Okay. I didn't know if you guys had any memory of seeing that document around.
I remember we signed something. I was just going to say Nick may have that because he's the one that did the Title VI.
Well, he did a little within them documents and I got all those from him. So...
He didn't have that.
I haven't heard from him on 504 in any way, so.
Yeah.
All right. So anyway, Nick will probably put that together for you in the meeting. We'll prove it. Just want to let you know we're at on that. Number two, let's table for the time being because I couldn't for the life of me find the UMAC quote that we just had a month ago where I said, hey, we want to go this route. And then at the end of the meeting, I said, no, hold off because I want to check the other quote. And we resent that one. Now I can't find a new quote anywhere. So hang off on that until I get it.
I'm pretty sure it's lower.
Was it 35? I can't remember part.
I thought it was lower than that.
It's on it. It'd be on the report from that meeting. I mean, I could find it.
I can't find it. I spent probably 45 minutes today looking for it.
We'll see if we can find it. We can get it.
When was that meeting?
Moved the law. If you're going to get moved the law.
It was in last month, I believe.
What else?
Okay. Number three, solar policy. Nick is working on this, too. I came up with a couple values that we've been struggling to get just in terms of talking with them and some different people. For our solar policy, I recommend that we put a $500,000 minimum homeowner liability.
Require that they have that?
Yeah, they have at least half a million homeowner liability. And also we limit the size to 25 kba on any kind of solar thing, which is pretty big, but it's not, it's not huge, but it's reasonable. Same thing with the homeowner's liability. If I look at it, that, you know, we want to be able to protect our people as much as we can without absolutely fully just wiping out the homeowners.
Anybody checked that and tell me that it wasn't a no vote?
Yeah, I've talked to Dirk and Tom and a few of them.
They think that's...
They feel like that's pretty reasonable. So...
So now what do we need to do? Where do we incorporate that?
So Nick will be bringing that policy to you as well.
Okay, he's making a policy.
Yep. And I know that he's got it prepared. He just needs those numbers to plug in.
Okay.
And that's what we've been struggling with. So item number four is we've been looking at gravel book. I mentioned the last couple meetings. McAllister's quoted 3,817.26. Glasgow was 3,006. Like to recommend that we purchase from Glasgow on that to be paid from motor vehicle, water wastewater treatment plant, and electric equipment funds. And I'd ask that you approve that.
Well, yeah, normally if it's a big expense, we go across all of them. But do we have just one or two? Maybe take it out of them. Who's got the most money?
Actually, motor vehicle is in pretty good shape.
Motor vehicle?
Electric, I mean, take your pick.
Well, we always hit electric. I mean, there's some other fund we can go with.
If you want to pay, if you want to get into motor vehicle, because it's a pretty good sum that we have there.
About $20,988 left and 87%.
Yeah.
And I can just do it all at one. I mean, that's a lot.
So plan?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I do.
It's all good.
We make a motion.
On favor?
And which one did you say yours?
Motor vehicle.
Number five, Brownstown Electrical. It's kind of two separate things here on the same order. A new climbing harness for Brett is $856. And we need support wire, about 1,000 foot of it, which is 22 or 2,220. So that takes us up to about $3,000 and we pay for that for electrical equipment as well. On favor? Number six, the stinking thumb thing for our backhoe is turning into a real Tar Baby, I guess. In that RPM case, which is who we bought the backhoe from, says that they basically only have one option for that thumb. And it would cost about $7,000 for the part and about $1,000 for installation when they come and get it and take it to their shop. The, I've talked to another guy who deals in aftermarket items such as that and he's struggling to find anything also. But I want to keep that open until the end of the year. Let's see if he can come up with something. But that's $8,000. That's, that's a lot, you know, for what it is. You know, you're just talking about a thumb with hydraulic hookup to it.
Does the MAC value in the range?
So with your permission, we'll table that until next time also. Number seven, purchase of a hot pressure washer for equipment cleaning. I have three quotes and they're three different numbers and three different animals there. O'Reilly's is 4,600. It's 2,000 PSI, 195 degrees. Temperature is 6.5 horsepower rigs. Pigs and Stratton engine. Napa has a 4,000 PSI, 11.7 horsepower electric start Honda with a little bit more heat, 200 degree heat. That's $49.99. with a little bit more heat, two hundred degree heat, that's forty-nine ninety-nine. Uh, Standard Auto has a six point five horsepower Honda at twenty-four hundred PSI, it's four thousand, uh, two hundred degree heat. Alan, Alan's kinda like me, thinks, whoa, 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 more power. He recommends the big Napa for the extra PSI and.
That's a lot PSI.
That is a lot, and one thing that we have to be very, very careful of is with that much PSI, that'll take the paint, red off stuff.
What about hoses or what?
The seals and all that kind of stuff, so I mean, you've gotta, you've gotta really back off of it.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm a little worried.
Yeah.
About, yeah.
And we are too, I mean, we're very conscious of that. What, one of the things that, that we're concerned about is, uh, obviously we're hauling that, that wasted at dumpsters. And we wanna be able to clean that equipment as thoroughly as possible.
Where do you, where, 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 where would you clean that?
We'll verify the, uh, by the, the gravel in front of the shop is where we generally do that. And then we'll throw down some other.
With that?
Cleaning type chemicals, like, uh, we'll throw some lime down occasionally.
Yeah.
In that area.
We don't have a drain for it.
Not, not inside, not inside or any group that I have. They may have one over the, the, uh,
Wastewater plant?
Fire department, but I don't think you wanna drag that in there.
I wonder, how long would it take to develop a septic tank? How much is it? Would, could you put it in a septic tank and just pump it when it's full? How often would it be full? We got fifteen hundred gallon.
Then there are a lot of debris and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. You'd have to find somebody who wanna pump it too.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can land apply that.
Well, back to the four thousand PSI, it's just awful dangerous.
Well, I would check and see if that one in Napa can be turned down some, because they have four thousand ounces.
I'm amazed with two thousand, dude, it's.
Boy, if somebody even screwed up and shot somebody, I mean. Then, then you got the cost of the hoses too, a little expensive, they, they might have that somewhere. Maybe able to crank that down. I'm sure they can't well fit, but I don't know if they can get it down much.
There again.
If they can crank it down, somebody can crank it down.
Yeah, that's just it, you don't know what it's all, it's just like leaving equipment on the machine shop, people get it all the time, dirty stuff, it's noisy.
I don't know.
It's still a Honda.
Still a Honda, yeah. Two hundred degrees.
I appreciate what Alan, you guys are thinking, but I just worry about safety factor for people and equipment.
What does a fire hose, how many PSI do you?
I don't know, just be whatever's out of the faucet at their house.
Well, I picture.
Cause you know when they used to turn the hoses on you?
Were you going to write it?
No, it was after a Georgia ballgame and they trampled on our hedges and.
So you should come to those.
I didn't, but yes, that's what the ground crew did before that was outlawed. It slowed them, slowed them down.
Yeah, it doesn't say specifically in the literature I have, so if you would rather go with the, uh.
I think for safety, for equipment and people, you wanna go over PSI, uh.
The, uh, let's see, twenty-four hundred?
Yeah.
Standard Auto's six point five horsepower Honda, twenty-four hundred PSI.
And if you got, we have money left on NVH equipment, why not just keep it some more, take it out of there?
That's my motion, I'll second.
There you go. On favor?
Hey Jeff, Randy found that UMAC quote, it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five, so it's a little bit less.
Do you guys wanna move on that, get this thing going?
I'll move motion.
On favor? Thank you, folks. Is that all you got, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Randy?
Well, we hired new crossing guard for thirty-six who started work today, introduced you to him, sitting right there behind you with the camera. The police department participated in Operation.
Five kids crossing.
Roll the blitz.
Pull the blitz through the end of the month or the end of the year, however you wanna consider it, uh, safe holiday traveling. The remodel down at the police department's coming along nicely, the, uh, chaplain that's been doing the work took a vacation, so we've been off a little bit. And I wanted to, uh, I know we discussed it the other night at the budget meeting, but, uh, also point out that we had six thousand dollars, but we got more than that. Left in the part-time funds, if you wanted to use some of that for paying down, uh, comp.
Well.
We have one of the new vehicles, if you haven't seen it. Is it out front? It's out front, if you'd like to go see it.
Just have one, you said, did we get both or just get one?
Yeah, we got them both, we're just waiting on the other one to get finished up, getting all the equipment in it. And then I think we have to get the stripes and, uh, stuff put on still. I've got the, uh, statistics for the last two weeks since the last meeting there for you. And, uh, officers are finishing up their training for the end of the year, that has to be reported. And it's been relayed to them, if they don't have their training done by December thirty-first, they will not have police. And that is Officer Diddy on All Force Academy.
What kind of training are you requiring, Randy?
All the required training, firearms, defensive tactics.
Okay.
Emergency vehicle operation, it's something we have to do every year. There's a minimum twenty-four hours that's required by the state, but we, we do above that. And with our new, um, online training stuff, they're getting a lot of that through there, um, carried through there.
Is anybody close to that being done?
I don't know. It was pretty well stressed to them, so. We did have firearms training this last weekend and, uh, no, last week, on Wednesday, um, and Assistant Chief McMichael had a little mishap where the, uh, gun smacked his glasses and scratched him deeply.
Did he shoot the rifle?
Pistol. Got a little too close to him, I guess. Going around the corner.
Where'd you do that at?
On a drill at the, uh, FOP range in Monza River. Anyway, his, uh, I had him fill out a, uh, property damage, not criminal report. And the training instructor that was present due to the training also added his information to the report. And Bill gave me a, uh, copy of the bill that wasn't paid, or the part that wasn't paid by his vision plan. And it looks like two hundred and sixty dollars. Is the way I've read this. But because he had the transition lenses, they had to replace both lenses, they said. If you wanna see that. The police commission met, um, twenty-eight and dismissed Derek Cerny. So that position is open, we've been advertising for, um, December tenth is the deadline for applications. Unless we don't have very many, we'll extend it out a little further, but, uh, we don't anticipate being able to hire someone until the end of January. Well, with, uh, testing, physical agility testing, written testing, interviews, uh, with the officers and then, uh, police commission interviews, so we've got a little time for that. It doesn't look like we have at this point anybody that has, uh, has any experience applying.
I may have a question for you.
I think I got four right now.
And we need this Thursday, too.
Yes, uh, police commission meets again this Thursday, um, to review some use of force reports. Uh, we've got some other things on the agenda too, um, we're talking about some grants that, that, uh, I'm applying for. Like, uh, I'm gonna try and get the grant for AEDs for all the vehicles, automatic equipment, the fugitives. Since, uh, we respond in town a little quicker than the analyst does and we don't have first responders, they become quite handy. We've had a couple of, uh, CPRs in town that we started, um, that save people, so. It'd just be another tool for us to use. Firehouse Subs has a, a grant application for that I'm going to apply for. And I'm working with Panasonic and our new, um, grant finder people to find some grants available to get some new mobile data terminals, which are the computers in cars. Working on those to, it's no cost to the town, but it gets us new and improved equipment. That's the only information I have right now.
Thank you.
It's, uh, Ian's car that's out front, if you wanna see it, I just asked him to bring it on over to, if anybody wanted to look at it, it's out front.
He gonna be here for a while?
Can be.
Oh, I didn't drive it.
It can be.
You didn't drive it? No.
Cameron was driving it.
Oh.
His vehicle and my vehicle being left in the police department, uh, because we've been a little short of vehicles, switching them around. So, uh, old Cameron's vehicle is getting the motor replaced in it. I thought they were gonna have it done maybe today, but it doesn't look like it, uh, Chevy is replacing the motor in it. They sent me some pictures, that was a while ago, but they got the old motor out and the new one's sitting in front of it, so hopefully they'll have it installed this week.
Good deal.
Under warranty.
So they are replacing it, not rebuilding it?
Right. The, uh, the first thing they did was change the, the pistons and the rings, and that didn't fix it. It's still using oil, so it's gotta be in the block somewhere, so they don't have a bunch of options. So that's good news for them.
Yeah. So what do you need for bills in classes?
I, I mean, I really don't need much documented, just if you guys are good with me, just paying heart vision care for the two sixty to take care of that, I mean, it'll be within my claims, but I can document it, thank you.
I had it documented on, uh, incident report, uh, just so we had documentation, I didn't know, I didn't think that'd fall under workman's comp.
Fourth part of claims for two sixty, first line, but.
Yeah, small degree.
Well, we gotta want to do the, uh, comp time.
Well, I don't have that report with me till comp time, that we had there, uh.
Do you have any of that, you have it in your breakdown?
Well, we have one recently, I, I just don't, I didn't bring it with me.
Well, I meant that and then breaking that out with payroll and stuff, because that.
We also need to look at the rescue funds and decide what do we do? With that as far as, uh, where you wanna call it.
Couple weeks to figure it out.
Bonus or COVID stuff, I don't know, whatever you call it. I mean, every, every county was pounding around and done it, and I think we need to, uh, step up or do something.
We, we, we have money for that.
That's why they gave us the money, so we should use it for it, huh? So, yeah, that's.
So, yeah, we have to schedule another meeting because.
Well, we have a regular meeting, but.
Oh, are we doing it after that, is what you said?
No more.
Talking about it? What we're gonna do?
Sure that, we can just do it our next meeting.
Okay.
It was, or we can set it, set up a special meeting. Okay. So, yeah, I, I guess right now just came with, we wanna see, uh, look at our total comp, see what we have, I think it was a whole, a whole lot. Of course, we paid one, what would we have to pay down comp time?
I think.
Three years.
Three years.
Four.
Yeah.
Been that long?
About two years.
Two years. Be two years, first of the year, I believe.
So that's something, uh, probably.
But as a reminder, with the sixth person on, I'll be able to start cutting that down too.
Okay.
You ready?
I think so.
Ready. Thanks, Randy.
Yep.
Randy?
Plans two twenty-two, five fifty, thirty-four for the end of the month, and then we've got a few days for meeting date of December sixth for two oh six, one eighty-nine, ninety-seven, both of those registered. You should have laid that.
Yeah, I'll move.
On favor?
Um, I have the bank rec for the OKR grant that we, the bank we had to open for June, July and August, that you show there's a zero balance. And the next meeting before the end of the year, you'll see on this, there's fifteen thousand four sixteen ninety-six left in that bank account that we need to transfer out, put in bank one, which is our main bank account. And then we'll have, um, some extra that we need to cover for wastewater to zero back with that month. Um, so I have all those numbers for you, but I just needed to get, um, approval and signatures or initials even on the OKR bank as a zero balance, or a zero, uh, that it's balanced to zero on those.
Yeah.
Those are in one that, they usually have all of the banks that are balanced that you sign. And I think, uh, Karen didn't give us printed form for those two months, so I just need, need something on there saying that you saw the rose, that they do balance.
Any questions? I'll leave.
On favor?
You can sign anywhere, it's, yeah, just anywhere on there, so.
All of them?
Yes, please. Um, there's, I have a few different ones, um, milling adjustments, but I've got a total of forty-eight, fifty-six, twenty-one. I think we had a, Benjamin's had a pretty huge, pretty huge, um, dollar amount there, um, you know, a lot of them are transfers, um. We have one individual that had a cap fixed on a leak, which was a little over five hundred dollars. And you can look through any of these, um, yeah, Benjamin's was almost sixteen hundred.
Benjamin's problem?
Um, I'm not really sure Jeff might be able to say on the, uh, they have a leak out front or?
Do you have any idea?
Um, let me see.
Well, I make a money check too.
On favor?
I'll look through there, I know, but that's all we did, that covered two minutes. Minutes for November eighth, there was an executive session, November eighth, budget meeting, and November fifteenth, there's three sets there. And I believe everyone was present. Yeah, so everyone was present.
Second.
On favor?
So they'll be here, text, see you.
Thank you. They, we have to have. Well, what's the introduction, the opening, some words for Randy and you?
Sorry about that.
It's okay, I can imagine yourself. Where they?
Cameron just said he's still there.
Um, and then the only other thing, as those are coming around, I have is, um, Mandy's put together a cemetery quote. I know Carla's already left, but she was, um, is on the cemetery board as well as Park. She's got some bullet points there with the information, she's contacted, um, our IT guy for the information that would've been even. She's got some bullet points there with the information, she's contacted our IT guy for the information that would've been needed in addition to any cemetery program that we went with, so all of that's there, and I think she's talked to you about that some too, if there's any thing further.
So the GIS mapping, how's that work? Do you go out and actually?
I'm assuming they do per plot. Or sections.
Yeah, I think that GIS puts together a, it seems like that puts together a lot of that base program. This is the same program that Monazuma's currently using, except they're kind of building theirs, I think, from the ground up completely, where that GIS takes a lot of the work. They actually hired somebody that's working full-time on that. And gonna take probably a couple of years, maybe a year, a year or so to complete, so the GIS puts together a lot of that work ahead of time, I believe.
That's what Mandy said, as far as much Monazuma was, they thought they were gonna project like four years to work on it, and they're gonna wrap it up in like two, two and a half, so, or at least that's what she thought, so.
So we pay sixteen grand and whatnot to deal with?
No, there's still some, isn't there the still input of state entry for it?
But not as extensive as what Monazuma's doing?
I think, and they started theirs, how many? They bought it a long time ago, I believe, so the price has increased greatly, but they're doing everything from the get-go. Like, they're building, they're building their own program, basically, through this company.
Will we have to do the same?
Um, no, basically that GIS, I think, will take care of a lot of it. She'll have to go in and take our mapping and input the information, but the GIS will be there.
Whatever information we have available, as far as, I mean, more than, you know, a birthday and a death date, I mean, they can, this can be loaded into this system. So if somebody came in here fifty years from now and wanted to know where one of us was buried and what. I mean, as much information that can be loaded in can be loaded in it, so.
Yeah.
Right now you have more. Right now you have more. We're so, so great.
Yeah, so. I mean, do you guys wanna, I mean, I, you know, whatever we want to do, I mean, we could have Mandy come in here and talk about it next, next Monday if she wanted, if she's.
No.
If we have to.
So we just do the cemetery board and make the recommendation?
Yeah.
And I don't know, I mean, does this need our approval or the cemetery?
I don't think the cemetery board has statutory.
I think they would just make a recommendation just then.
Uh.
Although park board has.
Oh, yeah.
Just the, I, I would have together.
Anyway, it's about the money's what it's about, just gonna figure everyone doesn't need that, we've got nine thousand max, we can come up, we've got two left in equipment this year, we've got about five outside services, two equipment next year. Throw those together, get nine, that's, that's, uh.
Not enough.
No, it's not, uh.
We can do a three-year installment?
Well, we, we, we have, we have ways we can make it work, but we just need to agree on how we're gonna do it. That's why we tried to keep a little money to do, but we'll need money somewhere else we have. I don't know what we need cemetery needs to mean, they're pretty dead. Little humor.
I got it. Yeah, that's, we gotta laugh at it.
I know.
Fuck, you need to speak up a little more, so.
We've been looking at this for years. I, uh. The GIS mapping is just so darn expensive. Yeah, I understand what that does.
Well, where'd you pay for it?
Uh-huh.
Where would it come from?
Well.
Some of it has to come from general.
General has to pick up the balance. I mean, I don't understand why it's so complicated, you basically have a plot, and once you start here, every plot's the same dimension all the way down, in every direction, they're all.
But are they numbered, or is it as legal description?
Yeah, there's a number in every plot. But when you buy the deed, you just get plot number to the description, I don't know, deed.
I've never seen one.
I've seen.
Well, that's good, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I've seen one, but I've signed several, but I haven't ever.
I would think it would be a plot number, reference that whole, the legal description of the whole area.
Basically like a short legal, sort of to a, kind of a short legal property or something, is what you get.
So if you looked at it, you'd have no idea what it is?
Most people would not be able to take that document and be able to like, oh yeah, there's, I can get there.
That's mostly descriptions, though, it says like one rod, then so many feet, and then another something or other.
Everybody needs rods.
So could we not just go in and number them?
I don't know.
I think the GIS, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the GIS mapping is going to take a lot away from the, the setup of the program. But Monazuma's building, they're doing, they don't have GIS, they're doing all of theirs their own, so that's why they hired an individual and it's taken a two year.
So they're saying her.
She's working full-time, that's all she says, she doesn't work in their office. She works full-time just doing the cemetery program. So, I mean, you got her, you know, two years worth of full-time salary versus the GIS, I, I think that's your comparison. For that's just, that's kind of your selling point, really, I mean, for GIS, but she's doing all of that manually.
We'd have to additional approval next year to cover up.
Should we wait until next year?
No, I'd like to do it now, we know we're gonna do that next year, I mean, heck, it's not gonna happen, nothing's gonna happen between that and the year, the bodies, at Christmas and.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. So now I was told, I think somebody somewhere said something about eventually you could potentially go online.
Yes.
Customers or, or, well, you become customers, individuals could go online and look up plot information.
Yeah, they can get, because we, part of that with the IT quote there from Cleaver Paving, it requires a separate server.
Server, right.
So that not just anybody can get into our documents, yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with the town server, it's actually a separate server for that program, which that's kind of an addition.
There is an additional.
It's an addition that we didn't.
Well, that would be that, I would take one of them, just go in.
You wouldn't plan on if you just went and got a quote for a cemetery.
The cyber attack insurance on top of that too?
I don't know about that, I mean, cyber attack on our financials is one thing, you know, cemetery.
I mean, if they can get in and look at cemetery stuff, there's nothing that they're gonna be able to do or change, they're not.
No, except they can lock it up so we can't use it.
Yeah, they're just not, that separate server's gonna allow it, it's not on our server. So they can't get into anything of ours, I wanna say that, but you know.
This does, you know, I don't know how much of this you guys read, this does include two, two licenses too, so we'll have a computer here in the cemetery. So if anything changes there, obviously we can do away with one of those, which I'm assuming would be the one at the cemetery. Lick, you're up.
Um, as far as my report, we had court scheduled tomorrow afternoon, I had to continue it though, because I have an emergency hearing in Vermillion County tomorrow. That was two ordinance violations, one was, uh, parking dog ordinance violation, another one was a nuisance property. So they're being continued. Um, I did send a email to, after our last meeting, to Structure Point indicating the offer that we'd authorized, I haven't heard anything back from them, but I did see an email come through today indicating they were waiting on us for something, so I'm not sure what they're talking about there as far as land acquisition on the sewer project.
Well, they're waiting on something from us.
Right, there is one property left, but after our last meeting, I sent an email authorizing that counteroffer.
That property over here.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Joe, did they call you?
I called the, uh, Steve. The, whatever his name is, Kleiner.
Kleinerman?
Right.
And he told me, I asked him, I wanted to make the counteroffer, and he acted like he didn't know what I was talking about, so I asked him, and he wanted me to put it in writing. And he was supposed to send me his email, he has mine, but he never, I don't have his, so he never sent it to me. So I, I couldn't turn in the counteroffer.
Okay. Well, he didn't even tell me he'd talk to you, so.
Well, we're, we're taking the middleman out, I guess, here.
Well, that's good. What, I mean, when do you wanna address that then?
Soon, better.
As far as Joe's counteroffer coming?
Bring something in writing, Joe, what you got?
Well, I brought, uh, the, they asked, you asked for a bill on that sewer, or the.
Oh.
Subsystem at the White House, and the estimate for the, uh, drainage of the pond that you asked for. I had to give it to you in writing.
The engineer told you to get this for that?
Yes.
Yeah, have you got a copy of this to the engineers?
He never sent me his email.
Well, okay, but that happened, well, that, that, that's something we need to get to, you got that?
You got this.
Yeah, I brought that to the board last time. Okay.
But there's a couple other things too, that I just need to know what the town wants to do. There's a, Doug Brown put tile in his eighty acres that's right south of me. And discovered that there's a six-inch water main that goes right across the middle of our fields. It's no longer, there's one house on it. And the house from the middle of my, from the center of my woods, clear to the highway, is a single water line. Then it goes under the highway and goes to Doug's rental house. And that's the only thing on this thing. The other line here, not so many years ago, ten, I don't know how long ago, they put a new water line down Bloomingdale Road. And I don't understand why, and my problem comes in on that deal. The pond is silted full, and it's blocking drainage on my farm and the surrounding farms that drain through me. If I take out the woods there and drain the pond, then I don't know what the, the six-inch water line is gonna be a real problem.
Is that the town's water line, or do you know?
Goes to the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Now, is it, is it, well, when they ran the water line to the fairgrounds, did they put that line in at the same time, or was that?
Yeah, there used to be, I don't know when, I don't know, it was putting it in a long, long time ago. But they went across the center of those fields and then ran one line to Doug's house, and then there's another meter on down that used to go to the old house at our, at our farm, that's no longer there. And there's that six-inch line and a meter and a meter and a shovel. And I don't know what the plans are for that. It, it's just there in the middle and it's not serving really anything.
I, I don't know as far as the water part of it, I mean, that was.
I, we just, I just, I guess I knew it was there way back when I was a kid, but I forgot all that.
Yeah.
And now.
Still serving the fairgrounds, did they hook on to the new one on Bedale Road?
Yeah, that's why it was put in, that, I don't know if they, well, they put it in, I think it's a bigger mountain. And it also went to serve Scott Pitt about then, which hasn't been, I don't know, fifteen years from now.
Randy's gone, gosh, uh.
The map shows it cuts across the field, like you said, yeah, it comes up Bedale Road.
So that was originally after it probably Funks or Scott's?
Yeah.
So where's that one?
This one is the new one, and it just runs in a loop. And there's, and this one goes right to the center of the woods and our fields. But I wanna take that. That logged this woods three times, and there's, there's just none left. And now that the pond has silted full, it's blocking, it's slowing our drainage for this whole area here. And even, even when you go back, even these fields drain through the creek, the drains all, through, all this drains through me. And that's why I'm trying to do something about.
And then there's current, there is a, there's a.
Big pipe or the highway?
I'd go to the highway now, right? There's something there draining that now.
Yeah, there's a spillway.
Yeah.
It's always been.
And your issue is, you wanna make sure that that's not taken out?
Big enough to walk through.
I mean, when they come.
Yeah, you can just make it up, just almost walk, walk through it, it's that big, the spillway is, that's not my, I have to get a I have to get a permit from the state for that.
Yeah.
They want twenty-five hundred dollars for that, I couldn't do it.
Wow.
But the surface water, it just backs everything up, and it makes our tile, fuck, it just, it don't work that good.
This, Joe, this is part of the sewer line project, the issue we have right now is that needs to be incorporated in the project, that they go through, what they're going through. That's, that's fact.
Yeah.
The issue we have now is you have, we have the driveway, and we, we, we want to, to acquire it, and, uh, we haven't paid a agreeable price, I guess, and you'd climb what they offered you, like, yeah.
There's so many, it's just. I guess it's a personal issue, there's so many things that's been forced on us that go through that farm, and now somebody wants to put something else through there.
Yeah.
There's a fiber line, there's a phone line, there's the new Blumpen and Del water line. There's a sewage line there, there's the six-inch water line that goes across it, there's an ammonia pipeline that goes across it. There's a gas line that goes across there, a big one, like it's a six-inch. They don't want you to mess with it.
Yeah.
And now we wanna put another sewer line in. You know, when is enough for that? And then I've got all these other issues that I was, don't feel great about, like the White House.
Right.
They messed up the drains and had to put a sump pump in, cost me thirty-five hundred bucks or more. Then there was a hole in the service drains at the corner of that White House that they knocked concrete in, said it was good, filled it back in. You know, after a while, now, they're gonna stop, they're gonna shut the sewer line off that my shop is hooked on to, and nobody's said.
Well, that's my understanding, Joe.
What's gonna happen to that?
The force main is coming in on two inch, whatever it is.
Free out.
Is that, is that gonna be taken out? Anybody know?
See, nobody, we don't have an answer for that.
I don't know, uh.
I would assume if it's on sewer now, that it will be rehooked up, I mean, I'm.
Well, it would go into the main, but the problem is though, it's.
It's behind the shop.
I don't know how many people are on that, apparently the building Joe's in is, I think those apartments, are they still on subject takes?
I know that Jeff's building is on subject, just, I don't know about the apartments on that. Or Jeff's shop up the street.
Yeah, the old high building?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Jeff didn't, he knew that the building to the north, I mean, was on a subject, but I don't, he couldn't remember what the other one was.
Well, a lot of issues.
You obviously want to hook back on the sewer, is what.
Well, I'm sure Collins would like to have a service there.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I'll, I will call Brian Hood tomorrow and personally talk to him about it.
Who's Brian Hood, Dan?
He's one of the engineers. He's one of the engineers.
And that's the other thing, speaking of the engineer, I want to know, and I want it in writing, exactly what they're gonna put on me and where. And I want it done that way. They've told me, this Kleinerman has told me that there's only gonna be two structures. And they're not supposed to be way above grade. One in each corner of the farm. Now, I've got plans that they sent way back when, I don't know, three years ago, whenever all this started. And there's all kinds of stuff on there. I said no to, to the pumping station, they wanted to take tourist reactors out of my field and put this pumping station on. And I wasn't gonna go for that, period.
I think that's been moved south, so that's not.
Supposedly since Scott's has bought the ShopCo, it's gonna go there.
Yeah.
But it's still, there was. Structures that were gonna be up twenty feet out into my field, they call them air vents. And now this Kleinerman says that they're not gonna be there. Well, if they had air vents before.
Well, they're going up there and there'd be a move down into the ShopCo.
I just think, I don't know.
Well, that's.
In my opinion, a, a, an air vent has to be at a certain.
Well.
Place to work, doesn't it?
Well, I assume it's affiliated with pumping station, I don't know that much, Jeff and Danny idea of the air vent.
They had two or three penciled in there.
Well.
They've changed it, I was gonna say, and I don't have any new plans, I don't think.
I'm sure, I mean, I, I'm sure we can get you a set of plans if that, if that's what you want, I mean.
Not necessarily, I want to know exactly.
Well, those plans have to show exactly, I mean, that's what the.
And how they're gonna do.
Build to those specs, so my problem is just trying to figure out what those plans say sometimes.
That's for sure.
The very detail, but uh, yeah, we can get some plans and see where that's at, but it shouldn't be gathered about a pond area.
No, that was my understanding, everything's been moved.
Right, I, I thought they were literally just running the sewer portion through and there was nothing.
Directional, directional.
It was all moved down to ShopCo.
Yeah.
Was my understanding, but. Cindy's nodding.
Me, yeah.
That's everything I've been included on anyway, from a legal standpoint, is it's all going to ShopCo and it's just gonna be the actual sewer running through Joe's property.
There'll be a pump at Scott's, at the Funks building, pushing it to ShopCo, so. I mean, there'll have to be some, there'll be air vents in there somewhere, I, I, they could be about any place.
ShopCo pump will push it on up.
On up to Virginia, not Virginia and Anderson.
Yeah. But yeah, my understanding is this, just the tubing or just the sewer portions running through you, there's not any structures being built on you, that's why. You want the vent you mentioned, but, right?
No, there's, they're gonna have two manholes, manholes or shut offs or something in there.
But the, the bigger structures are gonna be built on ShopCo though.
And I don't really understand why they can't just move that one manhole over into the corner of the fairgrounds, so I don't have to. Screw with it, mow over it and all that stuff. I try to keep myself clean.
I understand. So you'd like to see updated plans on what they have planned for your property then?
Be honest. I'm serious, I wanted writing what they're gonna do and where they're gonna put it.
Did you have an idea on how much you were wanting for the easement through your property?
Just want the thing, period. I don't know, sixteen in the estimate or a portion thereof.
Which means the estimate, is that an estimate?
You got the estimate on that, don't you, for the, you're talking about the drainage?
Yes. I'd like to know what's gonna happen to all this other stuff.
Well, that's, that's, that's just a, yeah, this is the estimate he's talking about here. Well, this is part of the construction process, Joe, I mean, that, if the state, if, if the contractors come in and. I, we have, we need to have an engineer, because the state permit would need to be a problem issue, that would be.
So anything that, like drainage wise, that, I mean, I guess I don't fully understand.
Well.
Cause I mean, this is, this is.
I'd like to put this in before they do all this sewer work.
Then you don't want to.
So they can, they know where it's at and they can definitely go in. Cause they're gonna have to grade the sides.
Or you're gonna have a berm there, some kind of small berm and you talk, what do you?
I want to ta- take the trees out, so they got a clear shot, if they wanna dig it, then dig it, and I'm gonna put my tile into the spillway. So that, and changing the, the sides is gonna change their angle.
Is there a reason you couldn't put the tile in after they've put theirs in and just adapt to whatever they've got there?
Cause they're gonna change the size of the grade, I want to be able to drive it and mow it.
So you just want whatever grade they set to be something that's mowable and.
For what, what, what kind of grade you got, mowing, I mean.
Enough that you can, it's, it's a mess right now.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to pull some of that dirt back and level it out so you can drive, saw it and drive it. It's gonna change somewhat.
Well, again, we need the engineer here to discuss that. On a level, I can't discuss it, uh, we, we need to see where it looks, what it looks like on their drawings. They need to understand what you're doing.
So this is something that you're gonna do on your own, though, you're not asking the town to do this then?
Yeah.
This is something you're proposing you're gonna do. Is that right?
Kleinerman told me to get a proposal on what I wanted to do, and that's what I've done.
Okay. But are you asking the town to pay for this, or are you paying, you're gonna pay for this when you do it?
I wanted to say.
Well, I think it's gonna be part of, well, I don't know, I guess, we need to have an engineer look at this, I'm assuming it'd be part of the project, it's going through existing pond with the drain. And we're gonna have to put it back to your satisfaction, I mean, that's what it boiled down to. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't gone out.
Yeah, I mean. Have you talked to IDM or any, I mean.
We've called them, the contractor called them.
What they said, I mean.
They told him it was gonna cost fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred for it.
But they already have something there, so why they need another permit if they're already.
I don't know, yeah, we need a lead engineer.
If it's already draining through, I don't. And I already, already be permitted if there's already a drain going underneath and draining across that.
Yeah.
So I don't know why there'd be a new permit if there's already.
I'm not sure they understand.
If you really, if you really go out there and look at it. Their line, where their markers are, comes in, like this is the center of the pond, they got a marker back here, like this is highway. They got a marker where those pilings are driven down on the bridge, their markers are right up against that. About a foot away from it, and the spillway sits out here four or five feet, which technically would be on my property, but. I'm not gonna do anything without. Their approval.
Well, what's our path forward here, folks?
We're gonna, I mean, he basically, we talked to somebody, probably with somebody from the town and that has more of an idea of how the project's physically gonna be done than anybody at this stage, right?
Well, from the engineer.
Right, from the engineer, right, yeah.
Regarding this part, um, I would think this would be part of the project, it would go right through.
I mean, they're, they are gonna reset grade and they're gonna redo all that type of stuff going through.
They're gonna re, they're supposed to put back any drainage that was there.
Right, that, if he's already got drainage going across, I don't know why there'd be another state permit when there's already a drain.
Cause there's, it's a spillway.
Right.
It's not tiled.
Okay.
I'm gonna lower the level and drain it with tile.
Okay.
Cause this whole, this whole silted full pond. I had to go to Farm Services and get approval and. All much to get this done. At first, they weren't gonna let me do it because I said it was a wetland. Well, it's an artificial wetland.
It was created, man-made.
It was created by the highway. Before that, there wasn't any drainage problem. Now that the pond's silted full, in my lifetime, I used to skate on that pond, but it's silted full completely.
Well, if the town paid for that, would you be willing to give them the easement for that price then, to set that?
No.
Cause you're still gonna have use of the easement area, it's, it's a buried sewer across to it.
Sixteen. I'm gonna put up with that for the rest of my life.
You're gonna do what?
I'm gonna have to put up with all, like, all this stuff. Just like the old wa- the new water line. At the Bloomingdale, corner of Bloomingdale and, and the fairgrounds road, they got a shut off sitting up there, it's about six inches above the ground, right in the corner of my field. I have to drive around it all the time. Why can't they just put that three inches in the ground? I can mow over it, I can plant over it, causing me any trouble. Every time I turn around, they're sticking a rod up, so they know where it's at. Just little things like that, they go a long way. Just, it's aggravation, every time they put, you gotta put something in. And we've got so much stuff there now. The tile guy had an awful time going around stuff, doing dizi. Ammonia line, the water line, it's crossing the gas line, just. And now we're gonna have more stuff. That's, it's kind of, I'm sorry, it's the way I feel. It's the way it is, I put up with all my.
Well.
I've got one thing to ask you, Joe.
Sure.
Would you give me your cell phone number? I don't wanna, I mean, you know, we're being recorded, so I think that's fine.
You're what?
I said, we're being recorded, won't you write it down for me?
Yeah, well, everybody can tell.
Yeah. I'm gonna talk to Brian Hood tomorrow and. See if I can get some of them concerns maybe taken care of and. Would you be willing to talk to him personally, if he's willing to talk to you?
Sure.
Okay.
We have his copy, Joe.
Sure.
Anybody got a problem with that?
You want this?
Sure.
No, I.
I mean, he's gonna have a lot more answers for him.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I mean, if, if he's willing to talk to you, I, and I think he would be, he could probably answer your questions a hell of a lot easier than we can answer them, I mean. He could probably send you prints, you know, if you guys can get together on an email, maybe he can send you prints on an email where you can. He can be on the phone explaining, you know, here's, here's where we're going, here's what we're doing, you know. Stuff's either gonna be on your property or it's not gonna be on your property, and that way, and then, I mean, we'll make sure. If it's not, well, whatever happens, you will have it in writing, I mean, I'm, I'm sure everybody will, but, I mean, I don't see a problem with that, I don't. He seems to be a reasonable guy, so, you know, I don't know, we'll see. I, I mean, that's all I can tell you.
I hope so, because I really haven't gotten along with that.
I, I don't know, yeah, I don't know who that, I mean, I've.
I think he's just laying that position.
Yeah, he's just a.
So, Joe, thanks for coming in, uh, so we'll uh, discuss our, your counter offer.
What about the mistake of the White House, too?
Well, yeah, that's another issue we need to talk about, but we got a lot of issues, let's focus. We have time here. Yeah, we uh. Need to get these engineers involved and see what's going on out there as far as your.
That says nothing, but, and yet, but one issue that my father was real upset about. They put the water line in down Bloomingdale Road. They tore his tile in a still bed there, and they were supposed to fix it, they never have.
Yeah.
And he gave him free treatment.
Hey, Joe, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Um, what concrete structure are you talking about, one that, one hole in?
It's the spillway.
Just the spillway, okay.
Just the spillway. It's about, the silt comes in, it's about six inches below the top of the spillway, the spillway is approximately three foot deep. Knock hold of the spillway, so you push for a tile entrance, and then you can drain it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, where we at?
Uh, it was my report, but that was what I was talking about, cause you guys had offered, I sent an email there, I did, I prepared a little bit.
You don't have a problem making Brian Hood, do you?
No, he's the one that can answer those questions, I couldn't begin to answer grade questions or spillways or permits or such.
I don't understand the new, why he needs a new. The permit for the pond.
I, I don't know, I, I think there may be some confusion of what he's doing, whoever he talked to on the other side, but. Well, just gotta keep pushing the ball down the road.
I don't have any answers.
Okay, uh, so you're gonna talk to Hood?
I'll talk to Hood.
We have a counter offer.
That's.
Cindy wants to talk to him.
Yeah, I want. Can, but I mean, you guys are the ones that's gonna have to make the agreement.
No, I mean, it's not.
Well, let me ask a question before you get involved up, they got the insurance folks, has anybody talked in about other towns, insurance substation, that seems like a lot of money for a substation course. You have to pay out a billion dollars.
Yeah, I haven't asked that question, though.
Did it go away?
I can, though.
No.
Well, I think we should talk to someone that has a little more knowledge besides people trying to sell us product, I mean, I'd like to know, is it a good thirty-five thousand invested or spent here every year insured substation, I don't know, never done before.
I don't think we're.
Sure, might somebody out there that brings them, right?
Which they are right now, but yeah, they have a, they don't have their property yet.
Oh. Okay, that's all I wanna say.
And haven't taken fairly any response.
Do you need me for anything?
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Oh, well, uh. No, I just wanna give you a copy of this and you can look it over, it involves a lot of. We're gonna talk about this probably more next meeting, there's a lot of projects and this funding source, if any questions, be a call.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I want some input from you on that for our next meeting.
All right.
Brian, would you leave out the certified salary for employees?
No, it's.
On purpose? I didn't leave it out on purpose.
I'm trying, I'm trying to make.
I know, true, that was.
Thank you. Thank you, I forwarded that email that I received to all, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but, basically, it's just, I, I think that all had to start when the seventy-seven son was established. I don't know who came up with that total.
He did, he, I don't know, if that may have been the starting salary at that time.
I'm wondering if that's what it was.
That was my recollection, that was.
And just based on that figure, um, for budget purposes too, whether you want to, you know, if you wanna consider changing it or if you totally leave it the same, I just will have to submit that paperwork back to.
Seventeen percent every thousand dollar increase would be a one hundred and seventy dollar.
Yeah, seventeen point five on, on that, but, and the way I understand it, you can make it more or less, I mean.
Right.
It's not a, when you get to a certain thing, you can't make it less, but I think it's just, I think it was the starting, maybe a starting salary, I was confused with what certified salary meant through a part. But I'll just be, um, I mean, whether if you, if you want to go ahead and decide and leave it the way it is, then I can document it. If you wanna wait till the next meeting and, you know, I don't wanna discuss anything further or change anything, but. I just wanted to throw it out there since I just got that email.
Since we need to do something, we need certified, so.
Yeah, to them. I think it's for the first of January, or by January one, I think, is when they're asking for it.
Well. We uh. Well, like I said, it goes up a hundred and seventy dollars for a thousand increase in certified payroll, we have three people utilizing, yeah. We can do, uh.
And I guess some flip side of that, with their portion increases as well.
Yeah.
So, you know. So, you know. Cause it's based on.
So do you want more money now or later? Cause it's basic, that's basically the totally same as the.
Yeah.
Front end or the back end?
I, I'm not, you know, will we, let's talk about it at the next meeting. We need to talk, but same time, we need to talk about next meeting, about what maybe the rest of the funds are gonna be something for the year. Uh, I'll look at some numbers on that, but, you know, we went a thousand dollars, that'd be one hundred and seventy, and three for us, and what's it, six percent for them? So it'd be small, just additional, six to a thousand. So, before we get out of here, right, I've got the latest version.
I'll ask one, one more question. We did not agree to put a sewer in it. Come on, did we, ShopCo?
No.
I mean, we were gonna record that, and as far as you know, everybody's good with that, right?
What, what they were wanting to do, I talked to a gentleman at ShopCo. He was, of course, you guys saw that email that he sent out regarding what, what they were trying to want. I think, I think his expectation is that, that we're somewhat guaranteed that the lateral line from the ShopCo building. How to, but that structure is, you know, in really good shape. Well, I've seen Doug out there a couple times, we get it, as far as we know, it is in really good shape. I mean, without running every, televising every inch of that. And the other thing is, they wanted to make sure that we were cooking up from the end of their lateral line into our manhole, wherever that's gonna feed out, which is only. You know, we're, I don't think there's any need to go from the building all the way out, but that's sort of what you're okay with going from the end of their line to.
Oh, yeah.
It's not that far.
That's what Brian Hood and I talked about and agreed to, and they were talking about possibly wanting another tap. On, on one of the other parcels, I don't know why, because all parcels are right there. But I said, you know, if you want another tap, then we'll, you know, we'll put one in, it won't cost anything while we're doing it, so. But just for some reason, it keeps coming up, and I just. Want to make sure that, I know we talked about televising it, and everything's good, so.
I thought we were just leaving the gaffees was the only thing I remember, but I don't remember anything else being.
Yeah.
I talked to Brian, and, and he suggested maybe going in from the inside, but I don't even know that there's somewhere on the inside that we could, you know, do that.
I don't know why it wouldn't be working. I mean, it's, it, we, we, we know it's PVC.
Yeah. We know how old it is, it should have a pretty good shelf life, I think, so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, so I handed out a revised budget based on what we did from last meeting, that's the ones got the, well, all the people payroll there. The other page is, uh, our handout, and you know, this is the next meeting, but you guys should really look at this and call me if you have questions, which I still have questions, but. What this does, it shows all the projects we have and a few that we haven't even started, but it kind of shows how we're going to fund it. Jeff, I ran out of them here. It, it, it's, uh, you know, I think I text you about coming across them, definitely, you know, we have other sources besides just the Blacktop and Morgan River, we have the, uh, Wilburob Street. And then we have this restricted stuff, and I, I got a copy of the rules on that, I think from you, trying to understand that, but we, we, we can do some, uh, maybe next year, we sold the Dyer. I think you were gonna look at some projects, perhaps, after you texted to the last.
Yeah. Yes, the, the one question I had on that part, yeah, I sent you an email on it, is if, if we're wanting to do sidewalks along Anderson Street. Then you're gonna get in some riding issues, and if you put them on the north side of that street.
It's not in Texas.
I think there's some issues with.
It's outside the county limits.
Yeah.
And there's some water drainage issues on the north side.
Well, regardless of what we have to deal with, we need to look and just get into some more detail, I guess. Yeah, there's a lot of issues out there.
Aren't we talk, weren't we talking about trying to have it, um, what is it called, we designated or?
We, it, we were, but that'll put you out probably two years.
True.
And that was not gonna make it.
No.
This is beside, it was just a matter of going through there and bill pay.
Anderson, Stark, Indiana, Michigan down here, after the parts are done, there's a lot of projects.
South College is another one, uh, Parkway.
Yeah, Parkway from thirty-six over. Voorhees is part of Stormwater. That project, all these projects are on here, really encourage you to look at it, cause I'm gonna go through this in detail next meeting, and, and you need to try to understand. And what we're gonna have to do is approve, I, I, we're gonna have to approve, I'm gonna talk to Randy more, uh, Randy more about this. You know, I, I suggest for some of these projects that we have going, and we start in the future, we probably set up a separate fund. And keep funding for what, whatever our portion is, we'll set it up so we can track it separate. I think that'll make it a lot easier in the future to keep track of stuff. So, yeah, so anyway, that, that's something we can get into. Next meeting might be a little longer. Yeah. Maybe not, maybe we'll just five.
I'm making motions for adjournment.
Okay, you guys got anything you wanna add, say?
Hey, Bruce did want me to tell you guys that the VFD is installing a wastewater treatment plant. They got that in last week, it's working good, but we'll be in this week to make some final tweaks on it, but they appreciate it.
Okay, so, did we have an all thing on?
I think we did.